Good morning, everyone. Thanks for your patience in working with us. We're still one member short, but he'll be here, I understand, shortly. So with that, if you'd all stand, and we'll flag salute at this time, please. Ready? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We sent out a memo yesterday indicating that today is not a voting day. We're not going to vote on motions today, but we're going to add to motions, we're going to clarify and do some things like that. So with that in mind, we're going to start off. And I would take the first opportunity to announce that in the last 48 hours, I'm proud to say that I have worked with Mayor Brand, Fresno's business leaders, department directors, to ensure that Fulton Street will be maintained while keeping Fresno's busiest street Shaw Avenue safe. Safe for our residents and safe for our businesses. So this is a victory for all of Fresno, and because of those efforts and cooperation amongst all the people I've dealt with on these issues, so at this moment, I'll be pleased to withdraw my motion for the $200,000. Okay, now, we can turn my screen on. With that, does anybody else wish to address motions to make or withdraw? Please indicate on my screen if you'd like to speak. Okay, we'll start with Member Soria.
Thank you, Council President. And I have a couple motions to make that I wanted to add for discussion. So over the last four years and four budget cycles, there's been a strong support for there to be an update in this tower district-specific plan. The last time that that was updated was in 1991, and we want to make sure that it is updated, so I want to make a motion to allocate $100,000 for staffing and required notices to update this tower district-specific plan, if we can find the dollars within Darm. I think that neighborhood and the committee would like to get going on the update for that.
I'll second it.
Anything else?
Yes, I have one more thing that I wanted to bring up. So earlier in the budget process, one of my colleagues made a motion to allocate additional dollars for affordable housing. So as we know, housing is a basic need for all residents. The state of California charges the city with planning for adequate supply of housing, and specifically affordable housing, which is why we have a housing element that we have to report every single year and update. But what we do know is that affordable housing does not just happen. It doesn't just kind of pop up. It really requirements the support of our government, specifically our local municipalities, in both planning and funding. What we know from the city's budget is that it doesn't really allocate enough dollars to leverage state and federal funds to build multiple affordable housing developments throughout the city. If we're lucky, we may get one a year. For example, the one that I've been working on, 88 units on Blackstone and McKinley, it's been a four-year process, and that is not enough housing. So what I wanted to do, the city over the last few years has been receiving the RDA debt repayment, and if we all know what the RDA repayment, it goes back to prior to the state's dissolution of redevelopment agencies, there was dollars that were coming into our city for affordable housing. And so when it was dissolved, we began to receive a debt repayment. For the last few years, we have been putting it in our reserve to meet our 10% goal, and we have met that goal, and we met it early on because this body decided to be good with the money that we were receiving. However, we have a housing crisis in front of us, and people are paying over 70% of their income, so I'd like to see this council support allocating for this year, rather than just the $1 million, 2.5 million out of the RDA debt repayment, and then for the subsequent two years, which we're expected to receive about $3 million, to set those aside for the development of a housing trust fund. We have to develop a reliable source of housing dollars so that we can again leverage the state dollars and federal dollars that are allocated. If we don't have skin in the game, we will miss out on millions of taxpayer dollars that will go to other local municipalities because they're making initial investments. So that will be my motion.
I'll second your motion, Councilmember Soria.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
So it's 2.5 million of the RDA repayment for this year, and then $1 million for the next year, and then $1 million for the next year.
No, sorry. So 2.5 million out of the 3.5 that came in this year, and then subsequently, the entire debt repayment for the next two years, which we know for sure we're receiving to be allocated into this housing trust fund, that at later point, and I'll add this, there would be a housing, council housing committee that would decide how those dollars would be dispersed with, you know, development, new development, rehab, and first-time homeownership.
Okay, so 2.5 this year, and then the entire balance for the next two years, which could be $7 more million.
Yeah.
Roughly like that, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Those are all my motions that I wanted to add, Council President, I yielded to you.
While they finish up their conversation, given your motion and my second, I'll withdraw my motion, number 14.
Number 14, Members, as far as that's been withdrawn. Anybody else wish to make any additional motions? Member Arias?
Thank you, Council President Caprillo, for withdrawing your motion on Fulton Street. I know that there's significant competing interests in our city, given our limited resources, but it's always nice to see the council unanimously agree on continuing to maintain the investment in our downtown Fulton Street. Sorry, that was Councilmember Chavez, who's late today. I do want to modify motion 18 that I made. It should read, with the modification, "The city will make up to $1 million available to meet the contract obligation for the relocation of the Darlene Rendering Plant." So if you can just take a note of that modification, "The city will make up to $1 million available to meet the contract obligation for the relocation of the Darlene Rendering Plant." Okay, thank you, Councilmember Soria. Then I would also like to modify motion 38 to read, "Direct administration to fund $200,000 in the fiscal year 2020 budget for advance peace and return within 90 days with a full plan for advance peace." That would be the modification to motion 38.
I'll second the amendment.
Thank you, Councilmember Sparza. And then, "A new motion to allocate $90,000 within the park's budget to fund the replacement of the roof to the West Fresno Boys and Girls Club."
Was that $9,000?
$90,000.
$90,000, thank you.
Okay, again, "To allocate $90,000 within the park's budget to fund the replacement of the roof in the Boys and Girls West Fresno Club." Thank you, and that's all I have for today.
Member Chavez is close.
Excuse me, Council President?
Yes.
Was there a second?
I believe there's a second by Member Soria. Thank you for asking, to keep our record clear.
And can I just ask, Councilman Arias? Could you repeat the first two? I got the Boys and Girls Club roof.
The motion 18, so we had initially indicated that we're going to fund $1 million towards the relocation of the Darlene Rendering Plant, but the modification allows us to fund up to $1 million if less money is needed, then we wouldn't fully utilize it. And this is specifically to meet the contract obligation of 95% of the funding to relocate the Darlene Rendering Plant. And then motion 38 was to direct administration to fund $200,000 in the fiscal year 2020 budget for advance peace and return within 90 days with the full plan. That includes budget implementation to the council for consideration.
You said fund 200?
200,000, one-time funds.
One time?
Yes. One year, one time, wouldn't be ongoing. That decision would be up to the council, when and if the proponents and the city come forward with the full plan.
Got it, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to add a motion to the motion agenda? We'll have to reserve some time for Member Arias, I'm sorry, Member Chavez, who should be here shortly. So, screen is clear. What we can do now is take on public comment. We have the, I have cards here, if you'd like to speak to the council, please fill out a yellow card that helps us with our bookkeeping and keep our record straight. It's not an obligation, but it's beneficial to our city clerk. So we will start with advance peace. I have these cards here, please come up, you'll have three minutes, give us your name, your address, and then again, you'll have three minutes, and we'll start with Reverend Simon Basadi Basel, followed by Diane, followed by Reverend Tim. So please give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning, my name is Reverend Simon Basal, 2106 North Ferris in District 1. I am delighted to see that this is on, has a possibility of the city supporting this. This is something that has come from the members of our community, those who are working with individuals who are directly affected by our violent neighborhoods and by gun violence. The amazing thing about this is these individuals who have worked for years to make our streets safer, many times doing it without paychecks, doing it because it was their passion, went out looking for a model that they thought would make a difference in our city. Not only did they go find a model that has worked in other California cities, but they went out and found half of the funds in order to make this happen. And so they're coming here, and I'm coming with them here, to ask that the city match the funds that they've already raised, the funds that they've already come up with. This is not just something that will be a quick fix, obviously, this is a significant problem, and it requires dedication from us as a community. So it's my ask that we would fund half of this project, not just for this year, but that we would be committed for the next three years of funding advance peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane? After Diane will be Reverend Tim, and after Reverend Tim will be Jim Grant.
My name is Diane Hansliczek, 738 East Lansing Way. Gang violence is a major factor in 22 homicides in Fresno so far this year. A lot of them are unsolved, no arrest, which leads to a cycle of retaliation. If the city, or if we have this program in Fresno, they would identify young men, vulnerable young men, and help them develop short and long-term goals, get them social services, mentors, help them get jobs, stable housing, or drug treatment as needed. A homicide costs the city almost $1 million. This type of intervention approach versus the cost of each shooting is something to be considered. It saves lives.
Thank you very much. Reverend Tim, followed by Jim Grant, and then Erin Foster.
Hi, I'm Reverend Tim Cuttsmark, the minister of the Unitarian Universalist Church of Fresno. And Diane, I think you just said that there are one homicide, $1 million, $300,000 to take guns off the street and to save lives. With all due respect, it is sort of a no-brainer. A million dollars for one homicide investigation, $300,000 to take guns off the street. I appreciate that you're seriously thinking about this, considering it. It is a safety issue for Fresno, so a vote in favor is a vote for safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Jim Grant, Director of Social Justice for the Diocese of Fresno. It's so easy to repeat what the others have already said and what we said last week. We want to encourage the council to look at this with open eyes and with big hearts as a budget item that is an investment. We know that the economy always determines what can get done. We look at how much do we have, how little can we do? Think of this as a wise decision that not only addresses the issue of the violence that we know is needing to be addressed in a fresh way, but to see this approach as very, very reasonable and very, very fiscally responsible. The $300,000 for five years is not meant to be just throwing money and then feeling, oh, we overdid again. It's like not overdoing, but actually deciding to commit to something that is a long-range plan, not a quick fix, but something that's going to demand that we follow it up, we monitor it, and that we assess it. I want to share one thing that Erin shared with me in an interview, is he was speaking to me about the mayor, admitting that when Erin said, "I lost my daughter, I've lost my son to violence," and the mayor was able to say, "We lost a daughter, we lost a child." And if we could see this issue of the violence in our city as not just personal for individuals, but rather something that all of us share equally, we all have children, we all have people that we hold very dear, and if we could see that parts of this city definitely need to be addressed in a special way over the violence that is part of their lives, it will be overdue and well-done. So thank you very much for the attention you've already given to this issue, because you have definitely kept it alive, and I do hope that when you look at the money you are willing to put forward, it will not be something that's only a small commitment, but rather what this needs, $300,000 for five years. Thank you very much for your commitment, following up on the interest of your community, which you are elected to serve and which is what you're doing today. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. I want to say thank you for what you've given us already, and I'm hopeful. I believe that it's all culture to turn bones into meals. That's why we all love ribs at barbecue. I do know that things are going to change, and again, I'm coming here with a heart full of hope and a face full of smiles, because I know that given this opportunity, we're going to change the lives of thousands. Unfortunately, I know someone's going to get killed this summer. That's just what's going to happen. But we have the opportunity to make this a thing of the past, and that's what I'm more hopeful for, so I'm saying thank you for giving us the opportunity to save the lives of our children. That's the most important thing for me. I don't want to have any accolades, you don't have to give me a pat on the back, just give me the opportunity to help, not bury a child this summer. So again, I came to say thank you, and I'm hopeful in 90 days that the city adopts this thing permanently. So again, thank you again. I'll see you guys soon.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this topic?
Councilmember Caprillo?
Yes.
Might I suggest, in addition to the folks who have shown up to advocate for or against this issue, this is completely up to the folks who have come out here to advocate, I think there are several colleagues who have not had the privilege of sitting down with you like I have, and if there's somebody who wanted to take three minutes, or if you would allow it, five minutes, just to give sort of a factual presentation verbally on the components of the program, the funding, where the other half is coming from, and what our portion of the funding would be going towards. I hope, if anybody in the audience was up for that, maybe we can give them a few minutes when that time comes.
Okay. Good morning. Give us your name and address, if you would, you'll have three minutes.
Hello, good morning, Council President and Councilmembers. My name is Gabriel Warhado. I live at 1133 East Garrett Avenue, Fresno, 93706, in District 3. I feel like we should push advance peace, because I feel like it's important, it's important because I grew up in southwest Fresno, and I know it's not the safest place or community ever. There are commonly shootings and violence in and around my neighborhoods. I remember I was young, and I witnessed, I would witness, gang and violence. I was walking home from the first grade with my father and brother, and all of a sudden I saw a man getting chased into a field by two people, matching weapons. I didn't know what was going on, as I was very young, and all of a sudden, my father just tells me to take my brother's hand and run home. I later found out the man was killed, and it was in gang violence. The man was wearing a sweater of opposite color. He had no affiliation to gangs, but the two men that were chasing him had affiliation to gangs, and that was the color of the opposite gang. It was from that day on, I realized my neighborhood wasn't safe, that there is violence, and that there were violent gang members in my neighborhood. This is important to me, because I feel like kids and people in general should be able to play and hang out and have fun without the worry of guns or violence in their neighborhoods that would cause them or their parents and people to worry about them, that something may happen to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shermell, welcome. Give us your name and address in three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, Council President and Councilmembers. My name is Shermell. I reside at 2219 South Winer Avenue, Fresno, California, 93725, in District 5. My family and I are among refugees who immigrated from Thailand and settled in central Fresno. I grew up in central Fresno in the early 1990s, and I remember being scared to play in my own front yard. You see, Mong street gangs were rampant this time, and understandably so. Many were just trying to protect themselves. In elementary school, I had a classmate whose older siblings were part of gangs, and we talked about drive-by shootings like they were no more part of everyday life. In the back of my mind, I suspected every car that sped through my neighborhood, that they could be starting a drive-by. It was an unsettling feeling. My parents feared for my safety, I feared for my own safety. No one in their own front yard should have to feel unsafe or fear for their own lives. This is why I support advance peace. This is why I support the work to remove guns from neighborhoods, and ultimately to save lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to come forward and discuss this item? Please do so. I see someone coming our way. Can you give us your name and address? I have three minutes.
Good morning, Councilmembers. My name is Gracia Lenes. I'm with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability, 764 Peach Street, Suite Number 12. I'm here to support a couple of motions I made, and thank Councilmember Soria for really taking leadership in combating the housing crisis we have here in the Central Valley. It's not just a one-time allocation that we need, but we need this continuous source of funding, especially if we're going to be trying competing at the state level. We have those SB2 funding sources that if we don't have those matched dollars, they're going to be given away to other communities, and it's that simple. We have to tackle this problem seriously, for those experiencing homelessness, for the youth, for veterans, for the wide array of populations that, you know, just because they happen to be down on their luck, you know, get laid off, that can happen to any one of us at any moment in time. We need to be empathetic in that need and recognize that we do have this serious issue. And so if we want to seriously combat the housing crisis here, we have to be bold, we have to be, take leadership, and I think I thanked the council last week, and so I hope to thank you all on Thursday if this motion moves forward in the final budget. Furthermore, I'd like to also thank councilmember in making the motion to fund $200,000 for the advance peace motion. However, we need to do more. $200,000 is simply not enough. We need that full $300,000 per year for the next five years. That is simply a drop in the bucket in a billion-dollar budget that we have here, and not to mention the resources that police have, and yes, we need those. However, if we want, we cannot keep throwing the same amount of money at the same issues and expect something different to happen. We need to be innovative in our approach. We need to try something different, because clearly what we're doing now is not alleviating the issues that we see day in and day out. As a lifelong resident, I grew up in southeast Fresno, you know, people getting killed on a daily basis, or on a weekly basis, I would say, that I would cause as a child, is the norm, unfortunately. And we have to stop that. We have to be innovative in this approach and look at different issues, and this is a different solution. And, you know, $300,000 is nothing, again. I think of it as a drop in the bucket of the hundreds of millions of dollars that we're allocating and that we talk about every day. So hopefully, we see that leadership move forward, and we have the council step up and really fully fund the money that we need to move forward this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? If you'll please give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Marisa Morasa. I work at Fresno Body Sunidos as a leadership coordinator, youth leadership coordinator, at just 4403 East Flory Avenue. Today, I'm here to speak about advance peace and support, and also generally about the city budget and the city budget priorities. It is important that the city budget continues to fund and support alternative approaches that really center public health frameworks, and that really center work of social determinants of health. I do want to call attention to the advance peace initiative. This is an alternative approach to the city's standard practices. That standard practice tends to be just public safety. However, such an initiative does need full financial support from the city, from city council, to effectively and substantially be successful. And in terms of the city budget in general, we do want to continue to fund alternative solutions, alternative interventions to public health crises and to health crises currently going on. For example, the city budget needs to support youth programs and support services and jobs. The city needs to invest in youth holistically as well, and the community holistically. The city needs to continue to support and fund initiatives such as housing that address fundamental aspects of well-being, health, and safety. So thank you to those initiatives that are already currently in place. However, as a city, as city councilmembers, we do need to do more. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come down and give us your name and address. Thank you for being here today.
Good morning, my name is Kimberly McCoy. I'm the project director for Fresno Building and Healthy Communities, and I reside in District 1, Councilmember Soria's district. As I thought about what I was going to say today in support of advance peace, all I could think about is all the friends and family that I have lost in two-gun violence, and one name comes to mind, Jermaine Neal. Jermaine Neal was my classmate, my child... Jermaine Neal was my classmate, my childhood friend, who was taken away from us far too soon, and he was the first person that I have lost to gun violence. He was only fourteen years old, so he was not able to live out his life. This advance peace project is very, very important in Fresno, since there are not a lot of programs available to gang members who do not want to be gang members and who do not want to live that life. I urge the council to have a conversation with current gang members and ex-gang members to hear their story, hear their background, see the struggles that they go through. This is not the life that they chose, just the life that was given to them due to their circumstances. And we need to invest more into them and give them mentorship, show them a way to get out of this life, provide jobs, provide a sense of hope for them, be their support system. I urge council to find money within the next three years to support this project because it's so important to the city of Fresno, not just to West Fresno. We have violence in South Fresno. We have violence in North Fresno. This project is important to all of us here, and we need to think about investing more in our youth so we can stop this problem and we can help them live productive lives and become productive adults. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come forward? This is your opportunity. Okay, we'll move on to the senior center. I have Mr. Bailey, Carmen Navarro, and it looks like Vance. So, please come forward. Carmen will be next, and I have a difficulty reading this, but I think it's Vance or Vianz.
My name is Carmen Navarro. I live at twelve forty-one North Vagades. And I want to thank you first for taking on this challenging position of city council member of Fresno. We have few dollars, and we have a lot of needs. And twenty years ago, I met somebody just recently that twenty years ago was sitting on my, in my seat, coming before the city council, asking for a senior center. Twenty years ago, they built community centers that were supposed to serve seniors. Well, they are. They're serving lunch to about two hundred seniors per day or so. There's better figures that you probably have already. My sign says voting, tax-paying seniors, and we have curly hair, we're in wheelchairs, we have, we wear glasses, and we need a senior center to exercise, to do art, to do a lot of things that keep seniors in good health, physically and mentally. It serves the city well to have seniors in good health. So, we would like a standalone senior center, not something mixed with another kind of a community center, a standalone senior center. We appreciate whatever million dollars you can provide so we can bring in foundations and other entities that would be willing to carry the load of a senior center. Thank you.
Thank you. Please give us your name and address. You have three minutes.
Dr. Bill Daly, twelve thirty-five North Harrison Avenue, Fresno, California, nine three seven two eight. Well, here we are again. My challenge to you today is to whom honor is due. You have a business plan called a place to call home. We, as seniors, have no home. We will eventually be the homeless seniors of Fresno if we don't fund and find funding for a standalone senior center. You have the figures. There's a hundred and forty-four thousand plus. We have over twenty centenarians in Fresno that we've been celebrating their lives. We need to make a difference. You've got the plan. You've got the action. And may I remind you, you will be seniors one day. And hopefully, we will have a standalone senior center. I heard recently this morning that the Area Agency on Aging is selling their building that was promised to be our senior center twenty years ago. That's never happened. But now, we want to make it happen in our lifetime. I have seniors that are in their nineties and hundreds. They would like to share with each other. We all like to do things, work together. We make a difference in our communities. We can help support the youth and gangs. We can do all kinds of things, but we need a place to hang our hat. So, to whom honor is due, please consider this in all budgets going forward so we can make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Pardon me, I think it's Vianz, eight forty East Cole Street. And the floor is open if anyone else would like to come forward and discuss this issue as well. If you could give us your name and address.
Vince Correll. I live at eight forty East Cole Avenue, Fresno, nine thirty-seven twenty.
Thank you.
One of the things that happens when you get old is they don't work very well. So, when I say to some of our friends, I'll see at the senior center, guess what? We're talking about Clovis. They have a very nice senior center. I have opportunities to visit it from time to time, but it really would be great if we had one here before you get ready to use it as a senior. You'll gain on it as fast as can be expected, but please act. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to talk about that issue? Please come forward. This is the opportunity. So, now, we'll open up to general comment. Anything that you wish to discuss, please feel free to come up and tell us your thoughts and give us your name and address in three minutes. Okay, we'll close the public portion of our commenting today. I have Member Arias punched up first to request to speak.
Thank you, Council President. I do have a couple of questions related to the budget. For the budget director, on page one zero nine of the budget book, where we review the police budget, the liability for self-insurance charges is being increased by two million dollars for the new fiscal year to a total of four point seven million. My question is simply, I know where we are proposing to add two million dollars to the line item that funds claims against the police department that eventually result in settlements or legal fees. Staff has projected a need for an additional two million dollars in that line item, correct?
Again, we're talking of account five nine three oh five?
Five nine three zero five, liability self-insurance, from two point seven nine five three hundred to four point seven three eight three hundred.
Correct.
My question is, since this increase is based on projections, if we don't meet those projections, what happens to the money? If we only end up spending three million dollars in this line item, what happens to the remainder of the funds?
The full amount is needed to, again, replenish the liability fund. So, if that money has to be transferred over incomplete, otherwise, the liability fund potentially could go in a deficit.
And if that happens, based on claims, wouldn't we just have to allocate resources from the existing budget, reserve, salary savings, other means to replenish the funds?
The only challenge with that is we don't know what's going to happen in the future if those such savings will be there.
So, we don't know we'll have savings? We don't know we'll have more claims than we anticipate?
Again, yeah, we're trying to predict the future, so it's difficult to say what's going to happen, other than we have accounted for attrition in this budget. So, again, there is not the plan that there's going to be additional attrition.
Okay. One other thing, Councilmember, is that if the money that is allocated this year does not go for expenditures in this fiscal year, it is retained in that fund and will, in effect, lower the charges next year in twenty-one, so that there is, so that there's a balance.
So, it carries over? And it reduces the future allocation?
Reduces the charge in twenty-one.
Perfect. Thank you. And I do have a couple of questions for the police chief. Chief, I'll let you get your paperwork in order. Chief, can you remind us, what's the total expenditure for ShotSpotter, total cost of it, irrespective of who pays for it?
The city of Fresno pays for six square miles, for the unified, six square miles, and then a grant from FACS that pays for a little over two miles.
What's the total?
So, the city total would probably be right around a little over three hundred thousand a year, I would imagine. It's about fifty thousand a square mile, so between three and three fifty.
And that's ongoing cost?
Yes, that's ongoing cost.
Okay. And then, I know there was a recent audit that was released, and there was references to the need for better timesheet software. Is that included in the proposed budget?
It is not. That system we have, what's called Auto, is a software program that is created or can be modified by our programmers. We're working with our existing programmer in the Fresno Police Department to make the adjustments necessary to that program to allow for better tracking.
Okay, so you don't anticipate in the near future needing any additional software expenditures for the purpose of addressing the audit?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, chief.
Okay, Member Brettafield?
Yes, I have a question on page fifty-nine regarding the professional consulting. I'll give you a chance. On the twenty twenty proposed budget, there's an item of one million thirteen thousand and a hundred dollars.
Under general city purpose, yes.
Yeah, we had talked about that being, what was incorporated in that was the federal lobbyist, the state lobbyist.
Lobbyist, the muni services payments for their support for our sales tax and property tax consulting, and also, there's a small amount in there, about nineteen thousand dollars for SB ninety work by a consultant that works up, that works with Sacramento to achieve our SB ninety reimbursements. And then, I think there's also reimbursement for the deferred compensation program. We pay the retirement office to administer that and to assist employees with their deferred compensation. I think that's what's in there. But I believe there was a direction for information, for detail on that, and we are working on that to get that detailed information back to you.
So, you'll have that break down?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Because I just need to get that.
Yeah, that's one of the requests for information.
Okay, and then, same page on the special projects?
Yes, that's also a part of that.
Yeah, okay.
I believe Councilmember Soria had requested that information.
Do you know when we'll get that?
I'm hoping within the next couple of days.
Yeah, because I guess Thursday.
I understand. No, we will, we will make every effort to get that to you as soon as possible.
And I just want to point out again, Henry, how many do we have requests for information?
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three. So, we're working around the clock getting them out to you.
Okay, no, I know, I know you've got tons of them, so. Okay. Thanks.
How many requests have we fulfilled so far?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
How many have we?
How many of those requests for information have we fulfilled so far?
Forty have been provided.
Out of eighty?
Eighty-three.
Out of eighty-three?
Yes.
Any of my colleagues, feel free to withdraw some of those requests, and we get to the important ones. May I, Arias?
Any other questions? Member Brettafield? All righty, the screen is clear for a moment. Member Soria?
Thank you, Council President. I have a motion that I want to make, and it's cost-neutral. It's related to the lobbyist. I know that initially, there were some motions made. I don't know if they will be, any of them will be withdrawn, but I'd like to just kind of make a motion to address some of the concerns that I've heard as we discuss using lobbyists. So, one, when we proceed with any state and federal lobbyists, that one, we create an ad hoc committee with the council so that at the beginning of every legislative session, our council, the council sits down with the administration in a planning session to outline the priorities for the city, because right now, the administration pretty much does that on its own. Second, I'd like to see monthly reports come from both the federal and state lobbyists so that we know the progress of the work that they are doing. Third, I know that there was a motion in elimination of the water lobbyists, which I think is duplicative, and our state lobbyists can actually do the water lobbying. So, our state lobbyist, and I've talked to him, he's very capable of doing the lobbying. And what I would recommend is that rather than paying from the general fund, that whatever water lobbying they do, the DPU covers those costs. And I think that is it. So, monthly reports, ad hoc council planning session, also that the council members are able to go and do the advocacy with them, especially if we have any legislative proposals that we are supporting. And then, again, DPU covers costs for water lobbying. So, that would be my motion, and I would request my colleague to...
Member Soria seconded by Member Chavez. Anything else?
That's going to be it. Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Soria, would it be possible that you could send us something in writing on the motions you've submitted?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I would say that it's actually cost-saving motion because it would save us a little bit from the general fund, so there's no cost to it.
Okay, the screen is clear. I don't see anyone that wishes to have any additional dialogue. Just a reminder that we will continue the opportunity to make motions up until the day the budget is approved, which we anticipate being July twenty-seventh. June twenty-seventh, excuse me. And in the interim, we'll continue working diligently toward additional motions, understanding the current motions so we can be prepared to vote.
And Council President, I need, I have a clarifying question. So, motion number thirty-three. Councilmember Soria, are you modifying that motion? That was to cut the federal and state lobbyists?
I did not make that motion. I would encourage whoever was the maker of the motion to withdraw it, but I did not make that motion. I would support the withdrawal though.
Okay, we just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
That motion was by Member Arias, seconded by Member Brettafield. It's item thirty-three on our list.
We will allow the motion to continue for purposes of discussion and dialogue with the council and the administration.
Okay. Anybody else on the dais wish to say anything? Okay, then we will close adjourn today's meeting. Thank you all for being here. We'll see you Thursday.